So, thank you all. Welcome for coming tonight. I’m going to sit down if that’s all right. Can everyone see me okay? I’ll try to bop my head up here. I’ll stand up.
Okay, we can hear you.
Okay, that’s all that matters. That’s all that matters. All right. I’ll sit. So, welcome all and thank you for coming tonight to the Climate Resilience Candidates Forum. I’m Stephen Nutter, Executive Director of Green Cambridge again. I want to welcome Derek Jackson, formerly of The Boston Globe and now with the Union of Concerned Scientists for moderating tonight’s discussion. Your time tonight here deserves all gratitude. It is our most precious asset to participate with each other and have a positive impact in our community and ourselves. I want to call out the few councilors who could... Is it back? Okay. Test. Yep. Great. Great. Okay, does that work? Okay, all right. This is why you cannot rely on technology. I just want to point that out. That, you know, it’s great when it works, but it’s, you know, it’s always going to fail you at some point. So, I want to call out a few councilors. Actually, I guess that’s not happening, so I’m going to skip that. So, I just want to say, I was going to talk about, there was a meeting in Riverside for the shootings. Is that still happening? Okay, well, then I’m spot on then. All right, so I just want to thank them all for coming there. We understand that there’s a need to sit with that community through its tragedy because unity is paramount to resilience. When the towers fell, Denise, and there’s Mark, and a couple others, Craig Kelly. When the towers fell, our nation, just out of a bitter election, had unity. When Harvey and Irma and other hurricanes hit, we have unity. When the bombs went off on Boylston, we had unity. The most important thing we can do as Cambridge in the face of the long emergency that is climate change is unity. Not just slogans or hashtags or even quick policies and commissions. All of these, of course, have strength of our response, but we need structural unity. We need the perspective of how we run this city, how we collectively use our public assets we own, like the streets and parks, but also the things that we collectively own, like our trees, air, sunshine, and water, to come from the perspective of unity. Cambridge has all the assets that it needs, but we can do a lot better job sharing them. We are one of the wealthiest cities in the world, yet our inequity continues to increase. Just in the past four years, our overall average annual income has increased by $7,000. That’s just the average. But the rate of poverty across the board has increased, particularly among female heads of household with children, rising more than 2% to nearly 40% of that population. We know that all vulnerable and marginalized populations are the ones that suffer first when any change occurs, climate or otherwise. Clearly, large straths of our residents are being left behind, and statistics like that only barely highlight the need for more sharing. Our collective and local response to climate change is not a political issue, no more than a blizzard is a political issue. We must build more trust with each other. We know that through neighborhood-level resilience building is the way forward to adapt to climate change. We can start by recognizing our shared assets we already have been blessed with. We cannot begin by looking at what we don’t have or what we have to buy. We must recognize the inherent worth and value of all of our residents and what they offer and build a culture of care. We must continue to create a Cambridge that we want to see, one that is socially and physically connected, without fossil fuels, affordable to all, all without the need for a credit report or a credit card, and ecologically regenerative for all of our land, no matter if it’s owned by the city, a large developer, MIT, Harvard, or your neighbor next door. Green Cambridge works through all of these things, through permaculture-based urban agriculture. We have a small urban farm in East Cambridge that you’re all welcome to come and join us. Installing solar panels across the city. Last year, we were responsible for 28% of all the solar installs in the city. We advocate for a comprehensive urban forestry program and supporting a robust and protected, healthy transportation network. It is noted that Cambridge is doing a lot towards these issues. In fact, I would say that Cambridge is leading the way, as nearly as it always has, for other cities and towns across the nation and the world, but we must do so much more. Last week, Cambridge joined with Boston and Copenhagen for a new tri-city collaboration to better adapt to climate change and learn from each other. Copenhagen is a great partner in this, and I want to see more blue-green infrastructure solutions that recognize our water-based city in Cambridge and less gray infrastructure, like concrete dams or new buildings that push away the environmental context that we live in. Things like net zero and the Climate Protection Committee, Sunny Cambridge, protected bike lanes in Cambridge Street, the Envision Cambridge process, our affordable housing mandates, the upcoming urban agriculture policies, these are all truly remarkable concerning the world that we live in today. We are really blessed here in Cambridge, but we can do better. These policies and programs are great, but for all of us to move together, we must also create neighborhood-level resilience that encourages sharing our roads, our land, and our assets with each other. We must continually create a place, space, and substance for all, particularly when given opportunities like the Volpe site or Aleweyff, but also in how we go about our day-to-day activities, how we relate to each other, and how we use the vast amounts of existing buildings and land that we already have. Change will come most from what is there rather than what we build. I want to recognize the board members and volunteers who have come to help create tonight’s event, except for Quentin, our board chair, who is running for council and, full transparency, thus had no part of making this event happen. I also want to recognize Mothers Out Front, A Better Cambridge, Cambridge Residents Alliance, and Cambridge Bicycle Safety. Though each of us have our own way in making change, it is our unity for a more social and climate resilient Cambridge that we are able to collectively put this on for you tonight. So, thank you. We have a, I want to give all the groups a second. We switched things around slightly. Yes, thank you. Sorry. We collaborated. So, I want to give just a minute for the other groups to say something. We’ll start with Mothers Out Front.
My name is Deirdre Deegan. Can you hear me? Okay. Hi, my name is Deirdre Deegan, and I’m a new member of Mothers Out Front Cambridge. And for those of you who are unfamiliar with the organization, we’re made up of mothers, grandmothers, and others who can no longer be silent about the very real danger that climate change poses our children. I myself grew up, third generation, in my little Cambridge neighborhood here, in a family that, despite debilitating physical disabilities, despite economic challenges and busy work schedules, found the time to take action for justice and for fairness. And the beneficiary of my parents’ and parents’ generations standing up in the civil rights, anti-nukes, and gay rights movements, to mention a few, I felt safer because we were on the right track due to their taking action. Until, that is, I became a mom myself, and I started to have sleepless nights sweating in 70-degree heat in February. I would wake up in a panic, realizing that the federal government is not doing even the bare minimum to protect their future and is, in fact, staunchly marching in the opposite direction, doubling down on our development of and dependence on fossil fuels. I would wake up wondering what’s going to happen when my son and daughter grow up and see what we allowed to occur, wondering what I could say to them when they asked me, “What did you do?” And I woke up, out of my complacency, from thinking that someone else would take care of it, and realized that it was going to have to start with people like me, ordinary people. When we come together, we can make the right track. We can make that track, like my parents’ generation did. We are mothers and grandmothers ringing the alarm bell here to make you know that we are urging you to join us in taking action to protect our children. We need to make a swift, just, and complete transition to renewable energy. Time is running out.
And Abra from Cambridge Residents Alliance.
My name’s Abra. I’m right here. Okay, nice. My name’s Abra. I moved to Cambridge about four years ago, and over the course of four years, I saw myself losing neighbors, particularly families and friends who were renters as the properties they were renting from got sold and then kind of gutted and turned into really nice one-bed or two-bed condos. And I said, “What’s going on? Like, where are my friends?” And then I talked to another friend. I said, “So, what are you doing?” She said, “You know, my rent just went up, like, maybe 10%, 20%, so I have to work at night. I don’t have time to be active.” And so, I said, “Oh, my God, I actually have time to be active. What should I do?” And I found the Cambridge Residents Alliance. Specifically, I guess, on paper, we were formed in 2012 to have an impact on the city’s rapidly rising housing prices and the displacement and gentrification that have accompanied it. We are neighbors and community activists. We’re from different parts of the city. I personally live in the port, but we have people who are active from all over Cambridge. We are active in the fields of housing develop, or, wait, yeah, fields of housing, community development, human rights, urban land use, sustainability, access to transit, and civic engagement, because, of course, all of these issues are interconnected and need to be approached as such. Much like the national movement, Right to the City, the Cambridge Residents Alliance is committed to changing the public discourse on urban design and environment by implementing a human rights agenda with a race and class perspective, which protects the rights and needs of all of our residents. We have a website, and, of course, you can find me if you would like more information. So, thank you very much.
Sam from A Better Cambridge.
Thank you, Stephen. Thank you, candidates. Thank you to all of you. My name is Sam Seidel. Some of you will remember me from the days I was sitting behind this table, but I’m not doing that anymore. But I’ve stayed active. I’ve stayed involved in my community, including on the Board of A Better Cambridge, and formerly on the Board of Green Cambridge, I must say. A Better Cambridge is fundamentally a housing advocacy organization. Our fundamental belief is that we have demand that far outstrips supply, and we have to meet some of that demand with some more supply. And we have to do that across the income ranges, from the deeply affordable to market rate. We view that as just a reality that is facing all of us, and it requires all of us, in the view of A Better Cambridge, to support housing when housing is on the table. That can be very difficult in the neighborhood conversations, but we see no real way out of this jam, particularly on the equity piece. How do we offer opportunity to everybody through this? We are thrilled to do this with Green Cambridge. Environment and housing are part of a single piece, and I really look forward to hearing the candidates tonight. Thank you, Stephen.
And finally, Cambridge Bicycle Safety.
Is this good? Great. So, my name is Janie Katz-Christie, and some of you, oops, sorry. My name is Janie Katz-Christie. Some of you may know me from the Green Streets Initiative, which I founded and run. But, let me see. Not very good with technology. So, I’m introducing Cambridge Bike Safety, which is a group of Cambridge residents who came together to make Cambridge safer for bicycling by people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds. We see biking as a means to climate sustainability and resilience and as an equity issue, especially given the rising cost of living in Cambridge. Biking is an important means of affordable transportation for much larger demographics, including youth, families, high school students, and seniors. In light of three cyclist deaths in Cambridge in the last two years, we and thousands of other Cambridge residents and people who work in Cambridge, who have signed petitions to this effect, have called on the city to accelerate a network of safe, protected bikeways on major thoroughfares and key connectors so that not another life is lost while making the affordable and environmental choice to ride a bike in Cambridge. We would love to have you sign our sign-in sheets so we can be in touch with you. Thank you.
Thanks, Janie. All right. So, we’re all here together, and I’m just going to introduce Derek Jackson, formerly of The Boston Globe as a columnist and an associate editor, currently as a fellow with the Union of Concerned Scientists. He’s an author, a journalist. He has a book in the back there that you can check out about Puffins. Puffins, not Poppins. Puffins. Sorry about that. So, I’m just going to give the floor over to him.
Thank you, Stephen, and thank you, Kathy, for this invitation to hang out in my neighborhood. I live six blocks away from here, and so I see a lot of friends and family out here as well. This is, when I used to cover presidential campaigns, going back to Michael Dukakis, I always, we always, the journalists would be in the chattering class, always on the case of the moderator, when there’d be 15, 10 Democratic candidates in the primaries and 12 Republican candidates in the Republican primaries. They’d, “Why didn’t they ask that question? Why didn’t they ask that question?” Well, you can do that to me tonight. So, this is going to be, obviously, tonight, we’re going to solve all of climate change problems in the city of Cambridge. And I want it, hopefully, at some point, perhaps, some of the answers you hear will drill down. There’s a lot of every city, every town, these days, that has the sense to have a climate action plan or a climate resiliency plan or net zero, all this. They all have the same rhetoric. But I have had the good fortune with the Union of Concerned Scientists of doing some traveling and finding out a little more deeper as to what policies, when policies are enacted, what are the benefits for the everyday citizen. So, I had the opportunity to go to several cities where African-American, working-class, low-income African-American, Latino families, and Hmong families are getting solar power through innovative state and city programs from California to Brooklyn, New York. And so, what does solar power mean on the top of a home of a working, poor family somewhere in America? So, I’d just like to read you briefly this as perhaps a guide and a prod for this evening’s conversation. In St. Bernard Parish, and by the way, New Orleans post-Katrina, there’s about 8,000 homes with solar now, post-Katrina reconstruction. In St. Bernard Parish, auto mechanic Vian Tron, 35, and wife Ken Lee, 29, a server at the famous Café Dumont Benye coffee shop, said solar power and weather rising of his home have sliced old bills of up to $300 a month down to about $200. That $100 a month in savings is big money in a household with an annual dual income of about $30,000. Quote, “It goes to toys for the kids,” Tron said, holding one of his small boys. “Each one has their own iPad. I’m pretty sure he can use an iPad better than you.” In Jefferson Parish, Diane LePree Williams, a 66-year-old retired passport agency manager, said last December, “I love my little power plant. It’s the first Christmas in a long time where I actually spend on gifts for relatives.” She rattled off such things as a crock pot, a bubble bath beauty set, and a virtual reality game. Quote, “I couldn’t afford any of these things before.” So, hopefully, what we’re going to do tonight is we’re going to have two questions in lightning, lightning round answer-type format. Then, in the middle, Kathy will take some questions from the audience and read them to the candidates, and then we’ll have a wrap-up session where we will give the candidates a little more time to expand on three or so topics that include some of the presentations you just heard from, such as the bike, the bike group, Mothers Out Front, et cetera. So, the first question, and everybody, we’ll probably just go this-a-way to start and say your name, in case people don’t know you or you want them to know who you are, is, you know, within the context of climate change and climate resiliency, what are your top three priorities? And what of your priorities do you think distinguishes yourself from the other candidates? And you have about one minute apiece. You’re going to give them two? They’re going to take three? Okay. Dennis.
Hi, everyone. I’m Dennis, excuse me, I’m Dennis Carlon. I’m a city councillor. I’m seeking my third term. I’m an architect, urban designer. As far as three priorities go, one of them is already in process. I’m the fellow that pushed the master plan through the council in my first term, as I promise, because if you don’t plan, you’re never going to get to where you want to go. And this is the first master plan in 50 years, by the way, the city has undertaken. Number two is emphasizing and focusing on the flood-prone neighborhoods, which tend to be some of the poorest neighborhoods in the city, and focusing on homeownership as well there. Number three, I would say, is something that we’re pushing on the Volpe project, and that is job training, in the sense that to keep people in the city, in these areas that are going to be impacted, you have to have an income to support yourself. And if I can amend that a little bit, since I have a few seconds left, one minute left, I’ll amend it a lot. The city has to prioritize in the fullest extent what is most important to the experts. You’re the experts. It’s not the people here. You know more about your neighborhood, you know more about the issues related to climate resiliency than we ever will. We might be sympathetic, but it’s up to you. If this group showed up at a planning board meeting or a council meeting, the power in that group would be dramatic. So, given I was the first one to answer the question, that’s where I stand. Thank you.
In full fairness to Dennis, one question, additional question to everybody is, what is the number-one thing Cambridge is not doing on climate resiliency?
Well, I’m back again. One thing it’s not doing is, I mentioned it, is not focusing on the neighborhoods that are going to, are the most impacted. Yes, we’re putting in sewer lines, but we’re not looking at natural systems. We’re not looking at the people that are being eventually pushed out because they tend to be the poorest neighborhoods. Well, for the first answer, I guess that’s it for now.
Hi, my name is Quentin Zondervan, and I’m a first-time candidate for city council. My priorities, my priorities are affordable housing, sustainable transportation, and bold action on climate change. As Stephen mentioned, I’m the president of Green Cambridge since 2011, and for the three previous cycles, I was responsible for organizing this event, but this time I asked to be kept in the dark, and those instructions were followed very carefully. So, I didn’t actually know about the format until everybody else found out today. Under my leadership, Green Cambridge has grown from an advocacy organization to an organization that provides tangible services to underserved and vulnerable communities in the city. That includes free rain barrels that we make and install for folks, includes discounted solar energy, and includes free produce grown at our new farm in East Cambridge. I’ve successfully advocated for the climate vulnerability study that was just completed for 100% renewable energy by 2035 in Cambridge, for protected bike lanes, protecting our street trees, expanding city recycling to our small businesses, and banning plastic bags. The thing I’m most proud of is in 2013, I filed a net-zero zoning petition with Mike Conley and John Pitkin, which led to the net-zero action plan that the city is now starting to implement. With Trump pulling us out of Paris, it’s more important than ever that we take bold action locally on climate change and make Cambridge into a national leader on this issue. We are indeed doing many things already, but there’s many, many things we’re not doing. For example, we’re not putting in place enough green infrastructure. We are not ripping out enough pavement and replacing it with green surfaces that will help us be more resilient from flooding. Thank you.
I’m Jan Devro. I’m just finishing my first term as a councillor, and this term, I’ve had the honor of chairing the council’s Health and Environment Committee, where I have worked very closely with our two prior speakers, Dennis, who is a member of that committee, and Quentin, who has been a tremendous community advocate. I’ve also been closely involved with four of the five organizations hosting tonight, and I am a mother who has put herself out front. I’m the mother of three grown children, and I do view climate change as the most, our top priority because it’s an existential threat. So, while we have many other challenges in the city, they all come back to the issues of climate and unity and resilience. So, top priorities, like Dennis, I’ve been heavily invested. What drew me into becoming a public servant is holistic planning. Is this cutting out? Sorry. Particularly in the Fresh Pond, Aleweyff area, which is the part of town I live in. So, I see that as a lot of different things, housing, obviously, affordability, connectivity, neighborhood, and preparation for flooding. That ties in connectivity, ties into bike safety, and many of you know I’ve been a leading advocate for protected bike lanes and getting more people onto bikes as they are able. And also, trees. That ties in with the urban heat island, with our capacity for carbon absorption. I just held a two-hour committee hearing this afternoon, Dennis attended, on how to better protect our tree canopy, including trees on private property, which at the moment have virtually no protections, and that’s about 70% of our tree canopy. So, thank you. Look forward to the rest of the night.
My name is Samuel Gebrew. I’m a 25-year-old running for city council. I have lived in this city since I was three. I’m originally from Ethiopia. As some of you may know, it’s a drought-prone country, and so, climate change and the future of climate change is very important to me. It’s near and dear to a lot of my family back home. And also, as a millennial, someone like me is going to deal with the effects of what we’re doing today for decades to come and generations afterwards. So, the three things that I want to focus on as it relates to this forum, and again, I want to congratulate all these different groups coming together. Politics definitely makes for strange bedfellows. You know, one is environmental racism and environmental justice. You know, one is environmental racism and environmental justice. Environmental justice is social justice. And one of the things that I want to focus on, as Derek correctly mentioned, is looking at ways where we can approach communities of color in Cambridge, low-income communities, and immigrant communities in Cambridge, to make sure that they are fully aware of the vast programming that we have in this city, and then also that they're taking advantage of that, but also that they become active participants in the decision-making process. We're leaving those communities behind. I find that to be unacceptable. Secondly, you know, Quentin, you mentioned, you know, the Paris Agreement. I think that we need to engage in what I like to call regional resistance. Think about the red line corridor and the green line corridor. We're not an island. We can't do this ourselves. We have to engage with the cities throughout the greater Boston area, along the red line and the green line, to make sure that whatever we do is a regional response, that it's thoughtful and that it's well-executed. And then, thirdly, is, you know, I'm very proud that this is a city that's very transit-oriented. You know, over half of our population takes something else than a car to work every day. I'm very proud of that. So I want to work on making sure that our infrastructure continues going in that direction. That includes bicycle safety. I'm happy to have signed on to the platform this morning. I fully believe that we need a safe, connected street system throughout our city, and then also continuous bike lanes that reach other cities as well.
I'm Nari Okamoto, and I'm running for Cambridge City Council. My first priority is preserving economic diversity and protecting this city as a home for all residents. And preserving economic diversity doesn't just mean making affordable units, but it also means building affordable neighborhoods and making this a sustainable place that can support the population here, whether that be opening up green spaces, opening up and supporting owner-operated businesses here as well. Secondly, is making sure that public transportation and sustainable ways of transportation are both accessible and affordable, and that is the reason why I think the majority of us have signed the platform for bicycle safety and why we support initiatives like that. And lastly, supporting real estate development to be more sustainable and community-minded. The thing that sets me apart is I am willing to take this daring leap of trying new solutions that will put Cambridge into this place of being a leader when it comes to sustainability and environmental friendliness. For me, I want to explore options of not only working with the universities, the institutions, the people here, who are the groups that are leading the change on sustainability and climate change preparedness, but trying to find solutions that reach into new areas that we haven't tried before, whether that be opening up the university shuttles to be public transportation and reach new areas that currently aren't accessible because of a lack of stops. Trying to push for more community-minded university relations with real estate development, especially in this time of Volpe coming up and wanting to integrate more open space and open up new units for long-term solutions for Cambridge families by pushing for more graduate student housing. I think that there is a need for daring approaches when it comes to climate change, and I can bring that to city council. Thanks.
My name is Sean Tierney. I'm a first-time candidate this year. I grew up here in Cambridge, went through the Cambridge Public School System, and I'm now an attorney, working for the state legislature on housing policy. I'm the research director for the Housing Committee. Sorry, I was a little bit late. I was on a tour of the Pine Street Inn and the operations there. And one thing I should share with you from the tour, I learned that homelessness among women is actually up, and they're seeing winter numbers now at the Pine Street Inn, and they can't figure out why they're finding so many more single women showing up to the Pine Street Inn. And as we talk about housing and affordability, and we talk about low-income housing and moderate-income housing, we should also think about those at the very bottom who are being affected by this housing crisis and the dire straits that they're facing. As far as resiliency, my three top priorities. One, I've laid out in my housing plan on my website, sean tierney.org, exploring the use of a 40R zoning overlay. Now, what's a 40R zoning overlay? That's a smart-growth housing overlay district that allows for greater density, allows the city to apply for state money, and allows for offsets for increased school costs because of that density. Moreover, it allows us to access the Massworks Infrastructure Fund, which requires 25% affordability. This can help with some of the mitigation we need with the environmental concerns, flooding, and what have you. Second, I want to look at the trades. I've had a lot of support, being a progressive, from a lot of the building trades. What I want to propose is that we go into our high school and find out ways we can prepare our students for green-collar jobs with the aggregation that the city has done with utilities that's going to cause more local opportunities for students to get into the trades, figure out ways to get jobs that are sustainable, whether it's putting up solar panels, figure out ways with plumbers to take non-potable water and reuse it. We should get our kids involved in that, because those are good jobs. What distinguishes me is that I'm a long-term resident here. I've been here all my life. I love this city. I'm still involved with the high school, and I hope you'll consider me for your number-one vote. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Adrian Musgrave, and I am respectfully asking for your number-one vote. I've been in the city for about 10 years, and I've been a bike commuter and road cyclist for even longer. I have a professional background as a management consultant, and what that brings is deep research, deep listening, and synthesis of action, ideas into action. Earlier this year, I actually left my job as a management consultant to run full-time because I truly believe that the most important issues we care about, climate change, the rising inequality, are happening in our cities, and Cambridge has a particularly unique role to play within them. As with my professional background, one of the things that I do perhaps more than anyone else is, I do my homework, I do my research. And so, I've had the opportunity to read the CCVA, Net Zero, Envision Cambridge Action Reports. One of the most amazing things that we have here is, we have experts in our city who can help advise us on what we need to do. And now, I think, one of the biggest opportunities that we have is a group of city councillors who will be able to push what we need to do forward. One of those things is around zoning and building codes. And we know that 80% of the emissions, that 80% of our emissions in Cambridge come from our buildings. And so, this is going to be the biggest thing and the biggest opportunity that we have to do our part to impact and reduce climate change. And so, it's updating our building codes, it's asking MIT to invest in net zero for the Volpe development, and it's doing other small things, like making sure that the electrical panels are above-grade, because the biggest risk we have is a massive flood. And so, putting them above-grade for future development will be able to protect that. Look forward to talking to you later. Again, Adrian Musgrave, number one for city council. Thank you.
My name is Brian Sutton. First-time candidate for city council. I'm an engineer. I've been working in transportation and project management for the past decade or more, and I'm completely in love with Cambridge. I love it here, and I tend to grow old here. Specifically for climate resilience, there's, there are three things that we need to look at. We need to do our part to reduce future climate change, and mostly that includes transitioning away from fossil fuels. There are a lot of good targets already in place. There are a couple areas that we probably need to focus on. Specifically, the natural gas, if we're going to hit our 100% sustainable energy goal, in buildings already there are going to have to be looked at probably a little bit more closely. And then also, as far as electric vehicles go, I could only find one charging station in the city that isn't in a paid parking spot. I know we want to move towards bicycles, but there are a lot of people who have small children or elderly or mobility issues that can't get way away from a car, and if we helped them transition electric vehicles, that would help. The other things are, as we move forward, heat is going to be a problem, flooding's going to be a problem. So we need somebody who can implement what CCPR comes up with as far as the flooding goes. And, you know, I mean, I envision, right now, we've got the green building dashboard, which is terrific. It shows that we've implemented 32 of 75 buildings, mostly new of them, new buildings, new construction, but turning to green buildings. And we should have the same type of quantifiable, measurable goals and targets and measure ourselves going forward for flood resilience. And then, the last thing for the heat, we definitely need to implement a lot more green space, because that's what the main thing's going to drive down temperatures. Thank you. Brian Sutton for city council.
I'm Dan Lenke. Sure, we have a lot to do, and we will do it. Can you hear me? Yes. Okay. We'll do it because, because everyone here is ready to do it. We've been educated unexpectedly by what went wrong and what's going wrong, and we see it, we know it, and we're, we're ready to work together. I'm delighted with the initial meeting here, around tables, each introducing each other. That's how we'll move forward, that we'll, we'll listen to each other. Okay? And each of us here are needed, each of us here are needed. I know it, and you know it, to solve the problems that we can all see and have been articulated here. We have to do this together, and we have to bring more people in. That's one thing that's lacking in Cambridge. It's been spoken to a bit. High school kids, elderly, poor, people who are injured. We need their voices, we need their solutions, and the solutions of people who have done the work in other countries and other cities. So, what is the solution, or what that I see? There are three you asked for. It's that we listen to each other and that we articulate what our goals are, so we know what we need, where we're going, and we, we determine how to, how to get there together again and again. Thank you.
My name is Greg Maury, and I'm running as a city councillor. There's a lot of complex issues that are out there right now. You guys are the experts right here. Everybody here is an expert, and everybody knows all the details of everything that's going on, like Mothers Out Front, bicycle safety, the environment. There's many details that you folks know, and I must tell you, yous are the experts. So I would be listening to you people that are in the room right now. Bicycle safety, people, and we need bikes in the city of Cambridge. They're here, and we need more safety for them. We need more jobs as well on these construction jobs, the building trades, solar panels. We need, you know, we need solar panels on all the buildings in the city of Cambridge. We need net zero in these buildings' emissions. We need affordable housing, affordable housing that we can afford to live in Cambridge. People can't afford to live in Cambridge anymore. So, like, yous are on the verge of that. Everybody here is on the verge of that. And so, I would tell you, I would be worried about everybody that's in this room, that can afford your home, pay your taxes, keep your taxes lower. Anything that we can do to help people in this community, we're going to do that. So I would say that to everybody here. My uncle was the director of the Cambridge Public Library. Joe Sakey, maybe a lot of people know him. He was Mr. Environment. My uncle was Mr. Environment, and he worked on the Bill of Rights with Franklin Roosevelt. So, the Bill of Rights, that we have a job, we have an education, we have a right to have a home that we can afford. Yous are all mothers. I know, look at all the mothers that are in the room right now. I know that yous are worried about your children, where you're going to live, where you're going to go, what's going to happen, education, school tuitions, everything. Yous are the experts on all these different things, and my name is gregmaury.com. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sumbal Siddiqui. I am a first-time candidate running. I grew up in Cambridge. I am a legal aid attorney by day, and by night, I'm enjoying this. So, my priorities, so a lot of, you know, what's been mentioned, I wholeheartedly agree with. For me, affordable housing is a top priority. I grew up in public housing in Cambridge, so really thinking about the effects of climate change, how do we accommodate flooding? How do we make sure what we're building is resilient is definitely top of mind. Secondly, you know, promoting net zero, Vision Zero are high priorities for me. And third, more specifically, you know, I'd love our city to restore Jerry's Pond. I grew up across the street, I grew up in the Ringe Towers, and that space, you know, was empty, as we know. It's been empty for a really long, long time. I have been so pleased by the residents who've really been working on the situation there. It's complicated. We don't own that land, GCP does, and we would, we'll have to put in a lot of effort to clean it up. But when you think about environmental justice, that spot has been contaminated for how many years? And it's been across low-income housing. So when you're looking, you know, for environmental injustice, it's right there. So that's something, as a city councillor, I would love to work on. How, you know, you can tell me apart from candidates, is this lived-life experience, having grown up in Ringe Towers, having grown up in Roosevelt Towers. I know what it's like to be low-income. I know my family who has, you know, been working hard, they don't know what an urban heat island is, you know? And so, it's going to take folks who, you know, even I had to Google it, to be quite honest, you know, and do my research on these issues. We have to make sure we are explaining these really complex topics to people who, you know, may, you know, may not have the time for it. So that's something that all of us need to do, and as a city, we could definitely be doing better.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I apologize for being late. The mayor and I were at a community meeting about the recent shootings in Cambridgeport and Riverside. The mayor then had to go to a school committee meeting, so I do apologize. The question, three priorities related to climate change, and then what's one thing we're not doing? Okay. So, we know that there's a lot of development going on in the city. A lot of it is happening on floodplains. I mean, a lot of Cambridges are on floodplains, or are, and so we have to make sure that we're requiring developers to build to the highest possible standards in terms of flood mitigation, 2070 standards, to make sure that what they are building is going to be sustainable. Bike lanes, I do support the goal of getting to 20 miles of bike lanes in the city. You know, I'm not a bicyclist like some of our other ones up here, but, you know, not too long after the tragedies that happened with the, in the city, I get a call from my son, who does ride a bike, who was doored and fell into the middle of the street. And sometimes, that's the punch in the gut that you need. And that was mine, because if a car had been coming at that particular time, God knows where he would be today. Also, I worked with Jan, and really, I co-sponsored, Jan really took the lead, of making sure Cambridge moves to 100% renewable energy by 2025. So, you know, one, some of the things that, so what separates me, I guess, I don't know if it separates me or not, but one thing about me is that I know how to collaborate with folks. I'm not the environmental expert up here. I'm going to give that nod to this man, okay? But what I do know is how to work with people. So when we were passing the plastic bag ban and the polystyrene ban, I worked with the Sierra Club to add amendments to make that stronger. When Mothers Out Front came to me and said, "Can you support us on our gas leaks initiative?" I didn't just file a policy order saying, "Yay, this is good." I set up meetings with the city, with Mothers Out Front, so that we can actually develop a plan to actually make a difference. So I may not dazzle you with science here tonight, but when it comes to actually bringing people to the table to get things done, my record on climate change and environmental issues is as good as anybody else is up here.
So, what we're going to do now is, we're just going to collect maybe five questions, and just five, we're going to hear the questions, and really short questions, and then we're going to have a few minutes for a few people to step in on one of those, if you want to. So, can I get five hands? So can I get five hands? One, two, three, four, five. Okay.
So when Cambridge talks about going to 100% renewable energy, I know my home is heated with gas and my water's heated with gas. What are you gonna do about, and that's far and away the majority of the energy I use and the emissions. So what are we gonna do about natural gas heating?
Wondering, how did you get here tonight, and what have you done in your own life that is pertinent to the issues we're talking about?
Cambridge, as we know, is in the middle of creating its citywide envision plan. What should be the balance between commercial, which generates more traffic, and housing? And how much of each do we need, given climate change?
Considering that in our, can you hear me? All right. So considering that in our very long human history, and over 400 years since the founding of the city, 99%, maybe 100% of the city's been developed, turned over, filled in, and redeveloped. How and where do we factor in ecological health and wild species in a physical way, and balance that with the imperative to be a dense urban place that's well-connected?
I'd like to remind us, okay, yes? I'd like to remind us that the climate change about, I'd like to remind you that the climate change that we're talking about is anthropogenic climate change. How do you develop the politics that is different from the politics that led to it? It's a political question. If you go on behaving in the same ways, you get the same results. How do you produce political change?
Who wants to start? You can answer, answer the question, the most question that speaks to you.
About 15 minutes.
Yeah, so just raise your hand if you want us to answer.
Is this on? Yeah. Okay. I'm Jan, still. I'm gonna answer question two, how did I get here tonight and what have I done in my life? Because I have given a lot of thought to how I model the behavior that I wanna see the rest of the community be able to adopt. So how I got here tonight is by bike, and other things that I have done. I've really rethought how I get around the city. So I now principally travel by bike or by transit. I traded in my gas-powered car and bought an electric vehicle, but bought that in, actually leased it in December, and I've only put 1,300 miles on it, so I'm not driving very much anymore. Have solar panels on my house, and I'm a vegetarian. So I am really trying to think about, that answers the wildlife question, I think. I don't know. Yeah, I'm truly trying to think about, you know, my own carbon footprint and what I can do in my own life. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. I'm gonna try to answer several of them very quickly. Natural gas, we need transmission, we need transition to solar. How I got here, a bike, what I do, I'm very fortunate to have an organic garden, which was tarmacadum when I moved in. It took me, even though I was young at the time, it took me three years to pull it all out, and now, when you put your spade in, you see happy worms. And wood heat, and I don't remember, did I say a bike here? Okay. Thank you. Okay. Okay, that's it. That's it? That's all you get?
I'll answer the gas/heat question, because I consider myself responsible for the 100% renewable policy order. Thank you to Jan and Mark. So there's a number of technologies that we can deploy. I have solar hot water at my home. We have something called an air-sourced heat pump that can help to heat your home, as well as cool it, and geothermal heat pump as well. And one of the things that I've proposed to the city in the past is to build geothermal wells under the roads, so that we can connect people's buildings and homes to those wells, and make it more economical and practical, because we can't all be drilling on our properties. We don't all have space for that. And I wanna quickly answer Ellie's question about developing the politics for change. I've been doing that for the last 10 years in Cambridge.
Hi, Brian Sutton. So I came here by bicycle, and I wanna answer the question about making political change, because it's a fascinating question. Even if we do all the work in the world here in Cambridge, we probably didn't affect the overall world very much. And in order to enact political change, we really have to take the driving force out of the fossil fuel industry. And the only way to do that is to make political change on a larger level. And the only way to do that is start with political change at a local level. The political change needed to drive upward is something I will 100% do and push for if I'm elected.
Also, building off of the question on political change, I think that for me, what this city needs, and what cities need, especially in this national time of uncertainty, is this engagement of the resources we have directly in the city, but also the voices we have in the city. Cambridge actually has a lower voter turnout than the national average. We're less than 18%. And I think, I think that's a problem here, and we really, really want to be engaging more voters, and we want to be engaging new voices in this. I would be a voice for a demographic that hasn't really had a seat at the table before. You know, for me, I'm really trying to engage this idea of, we have experts living here. We have institutions here that are coming up with innovative solutions for climate change preparedness in areas that we haven't seen in different cities as well. And I think that's something we need to be engaging in, pushing for more civic engagement, and wanting to push it beyond having over 18,000 people vote here in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. So I was gonna answer Ellie's question too about the political, the political will, and I think Brian hit on it, though, that, you know, I think here in Cambridge, the political will to make changes and to invest resources is pretty strong. We're doing a lot of things that other places aren't doing, right? But that only goes so far. And we certainly have somebody in the White House now who won't even admit that climate change is real, right? So we have to continue to lead by example. We have to continue to work regionally. We have to bring other communities into the conversation so that they can follow our lead. I would say, in terms of Lee's question about housing and commercial, you know, I'm all about housing. We need more housing in the city. I think we need to make sure it's done right, it's done well, but we need, we need to, if we're gonna really tackle this affordable housing crisis we have, we have to have more housing. I walked here. That's a little deceptive, because if you look out that window, you can see my house. But...
Again, my name's Adrienne Musgrave, and I took the tea here. Usually, I bike. I've been a longtime cyclist, like I mentioned before. I grew up in South Florida, where I like to joke that now that I've lived and made my home here in Massachusetts, I'm a domestic political refugee. Being from South Florida, they have built out every speck of the land, and they have decimated the Everglades. And one of the things I really, truly value here is that there is, there are people who care. So really, for that question about political action, I do think that we care, we're on the right way. Just listening to everyone who's talked up here, we have a lot of great ideas. We have people who are in the community who are continuing to push us to make action. These issues are really complex and technical. And then the other thing I wanted to mention, as far as, one more thing, is when we're talking about housing and environmental justice, I was over around the Washington Elms and Newport Court the other day, and there's a lot of hard surfaces over there. We're reinvesting in the buildings themselves, but we need to reinvest in the external environment as well, to bring a lot more grass, greenery, trees, gardens into those spaces to open them up. Thank you.
So I wanted to just build on Mark's point with, you know, the commercial housing, the commercial development that we have. You know, we have to require these commercial developers who are seeking any type of variance to provide community benefits. That's so key. You know, with Volpe, you know, they, you know, have said, with MIT have said, we'll pay into a transit fund that will, you know, improve the red lines, so, you know, in the future. We have to make sure that these, you know, we are holding some of these commercial developments accountable because of how they are exacerbating our housing demand. So we have to keep that in mind, that there are things that we can do and have community benefits. So my time's up, so that's all I'll say about that.
So Sean Tierney here again. I rode my bike here. I've been riding my bike here since I was a kid, growing up, and I, bike safety, so it's very important to me as well. And the other question I wanted to answer was about 100% renewable. With the city's aggregation plan, where you folks who are homeowners here had to opt out of, where it was gonna source your energy from mostly renewable sources, there is also the opt-in to go 100% for the sourcing. If we could have some sort of subsidy for folks to be able to take advantage of that, who maybe, that would be a burdensome task for them to pony up the money, be able to afford that. I think that's something the city could get behind. As far as, oh, sorry, time's up.
Hi, everyone. The saying is, I'm still Dennis. I'm going to talk about the commercial housing balance. When I moved here in the early '70s, I rented a two-bedroom apartment for $180. And the reason I could do that is there was very little new commercial development in the city. Kendall Square was vacant, my project area, the East Cambridge Riverfront was desolate. And the focus on, by the city to increase taxes meant commercial development. And they succeeded beyond their expectations. But that has resulted in a housing issue that we're all in now. So the priority should be definitely housing, probably 70% to 30%.
Once again, we have so many complex issues that we have to solve, and we have to solve them together. Housing issues, job issues, the environment issues, bicycle issues, solar panels, net zero, and everything else. And we're gonna rely on neighborhood groups like that's here tonight, everybody that's here. There's more women in this tonight than anybody else. So I'm gonna rely on you folks for your opinions, your ideas, and I got plenty of backing. I got so many people back me, I can't tell you. I don't even wanna talk about it, but I support everybody in this room. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Fatseidi Sivansai. I got dropped off because my legs hurt from canvassing. I did bike earlier, so. I really wanna touch on political will as it intersects with housing and commercial development. I think that we have very good intent here. We have knowledge and resources in our city. I want to see us lead on providing mixed-use housing with an equity lens. So that means that if we're looking at transit-oriented development, that we are providing affordable income housing for middle, middle income to lower-income families. I think that we need to designate those. So whether we do it by zoning, or whether we do it by a community benefit plan, I think we need to look at a multifaceted approach. I am open to this. I have experience doing housing development and commercial development, and I want to, I want us to lead in the metro area on these discussions.
Who hasn't spoken that wants to speak?
Thank you. You're getting quite the work out, going back and forth. So a few things, I walked here, I live about 10-minute walk away. I live in a mixed-use, mixed-income building. Pardon? Okay, sorry. Yeah, I walked here, I live about 10 minutes away, and I typically walk throughout Cambridge, and I use other modes of transportation when I'm not. And in terms of housing, I live in a mixed-use, mixed-income building, very proud of that. Right across the street is a big park. You know, we have a lot of amenities in the area, Trader Joe's, Whole Foods, Micro Center, it's all right nearby, and we live along several bus routes. So we have that. When it comes to political will, Ellie asked a good question. The only thing I'll say to that is, we need bold new leadership that's gonna take the risk, even if it means risking your reelection to make some really good decisions. And, you know, I'm inspired by previous city councils. You know, think about the city council that decided that we need our own water supply, that we need our own fresh pond. You know, that's the foresight that I think we need.
Thank you. Out campaigning today, folks, so sorry very much. Thank you very much for having me tonight. My name is Jeff Santos, candidate for city council. Some of you may know me as a talk show host. Done a show for 10 years, where I have had on some of the leading environmental groups across this country, from LCV, that better? Okay, very good. I should, I should know this by now. From LCV to Natural Resources Defense Council, I walked the streets as a 15-year-old for the Bottle Bill. I've worked with Greenpeace, been endorsed by the former executive director of Sierra Club, James McCaffrey, here in Massachusetts. I have worked with the NHL players to push the environment, and I've worked with Blue Green Alliance, people like Leo Gerardo, the Steelworkers, and Carl Pope of the Sierra Club National. I think I can bring together a lot of people who may not be as green as everyone in this room, but we need to reach out. I thank you for your time.
I actually did that on time. All right. The second question, and we will go from Jeff this way, is about sustainability and affordability. And as much as Cambridge, as Stephen let off, as much as Cambridge has done, there's obviously, I'll give you three examples that I personally observe here in Cambridge. For all that we have a high percentage of people taking public transportation, Secretary, the former Transportation Secretary, Anthony Fox, has spoken and written eloquently about the segregation of transportation. And it's only anecdotal, but living in Central Square, I see low-income people, workers waiting in terminable times in Central Square for the MBTA. Stephen is one of the top folks working on tree canopy stuff in Cambridge, and he reminded me that even though Cambridge, on average, is 30% tree canopied, 40% of West Cambridge as such, but only 10% of East Cambridge Area 4 is. And that speaks to me personally, being from Milwaukee, Wisconsin, where we've had horrible heat islands that, because of, because of tree disease. And it becomes an equity problem because, actually, trees, there have been actual real studies that show that if you have trees, you have less crime. And a third, Massachusetts, for all that we've been talking about solar, I know at the state level, Massachusetts is actually, is actually one, is not a leader in the nation about figuring out how to get solar to low-income communities and working-class communities. So with those as ideas, what is your vision, and how would you specifically bridge environmental, whatever you think is most important environmentally, with equity, justice, so that the poorest of the poor in Cambridge, people of color, any other disenfranchised groups, all of the poor in Cambridge, people of color, any other disenfranchised groups, all feel equal partners in the environmental revolution of Cambridge? Jeff, you want to start?
Good.
We'll just go this way.
Great, thank you. Very important issue. This is, this is an issue that Reverend Jesse Jackson, who's been a frequent contributor to my show, and I have talked about for a long time. You know, we always talk about on my show, and been nicknamed "Rebuild America." Well, when you rebuild America, you don't rebuild just white suburbs. You have to rebuild into the inner city. Recently, when Donald Trump was thinking about putting troops into the South Side of Chicago, not far from where Jesse Jackson lives, he retorted and says, "I don't want federal troops. I want the federal government, the Department of HUD, the EPA, the Department of, well, the EPA, HUD, and a number of other agencies that could actually get jobs and help reduce the carbon footprint in that city." This is just one of the ways to do it. I also work very closely on a, on a project called the North-South Station Rail Link. This is a project that should have been done 50 years ago, but it's met all kinds of political problems. The fact is, John Bussinger was the field director on my team, and Mike Dukakis have worked very closely to get that. That would take 70,000 cars off the road. These projects are all good for the environment, and they're good for the community. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Vatsyri Sivansai. I'm committed to ensuring that our at-risk areas and at-risk populations are included in our planning and accountability process. So I think that planning and engagement is critical, but when we implement our plan, it often does not have, like, a tracking or accountability part of it, and I would like to strengthen that. In order to have an equity lens, we have to ensure that we are committed to bringing our sustainability efforts in those at-risk areas. So East Cambridge, as you mentioned, but also North Cambridge, right? But climate change and environmental issues does not stop at the boundaries of our city. So when we're looking at East Cambridge, let's see where the people would most likely go. You know, would they go to Somerville, or would they go into Charlestown in Boston? Same as around Fresh Pond, right? So we should work with other neighboring cities. But when we're looking at renewable energy, let's create these jobs where our low-income families and hard-working individuals get them as well. That is part of our tracking and accountability system, and part of bringing everyone part of this process. Thank you.
So I started with the Jerry's Pond example, but that's, you know, one, one way to go. Second thing, an idea that I've talked to some folks is about, you know, I think that Cambridge should map the routes of private commuter bus services, such as Biogen, and even hotel shuttles, and study the numbers of passengers taking these services and the capacity of these vehicles in a given day. And if there's space aboard these buses, the members of the public, who are waiting so long for buses, and my parents have been those folks, to see if they can utilize that. So that's one concrete way. A third, you know, thing that I think, you know, you've touched on, and a lot of people have touched on, it's this idea of creating neighborhoods and creating space, and creating open space. So I think, you know, that goes into our master planning, you know, that Dennis has talked about. So, you know, that's something that, as a city, we really have to commit to. So that's something that I'm very much looking at.
Diversity is key in the city of Cambridge. And we need to protect our diversity. We need to protect our people, and we have to make sure everybody gets educated, low-income people, as well as, you have to treat everybody equally. So I support jobs for the people. I support housing for the people, education, and we just support all your, all your ideas that are here. We have no intentions of doing anything wrong. And with all the environmental groups, and science, and technology, we're just going to bring everybody together. And we're just going to get their ideas, because we need everybody's ideas. Everybody has a different opinion right here in this room. So I would say that to you. My name is Greg Murray dot com. And my uncle wrote the Bill of Rights with Franklin Roosevelt, so I would say that to you. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you. So those of us who have, here we are, those of us who have whatever we have, and we know who we are, and we know what we have, our gift is our responsibility. Right? Okay? As parents, or as children, to our own parents, that's, and now in our community, in Cambridge, is to share with those who are poor, who are in any way less fortunate than ourselves. Okay, here's, here's what we can do. We can do many things, and we will. After the election, it's not over. That's the beginning. Okay? What we're doing, what we find ourselves doing, campaigning is quite different than getting the work done. Okay? But we need you more after the election. I propose, I propose respectfully, each of these groups, that you, that you call these meetings regularly to see what we're doing, whom you've elected. And you assign to each, to each councillor, several who will monitor what they're actually doing versus what they said or hope to do.
Hello. My name is Brian Sutton, and I am an engineer, and I have been working in transportation, specifically rail transportation, for over a decade. And I really look forward to working with the MBTA to help with the Green Line and Red Line. As far as the other questions go, the, the tree canopy, so the city of Cambridge has put $425,000 in fiscal year '28 to improve the tree canopy. So I would work with, the initiative's already there, to help with the prioritization that needs to happen. And the same thing for the solar power for lower-income families. The Environmental and Transportation Division, CDD, is already measuring themselves on how many units of lower income they supply with solar. So there's initiatives already in place, and so the, the job would be to help them, see what hurdles they have, and try to accelerate the progress they're making. Again, I'm Brian Sutton. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Adrienne Musgrave, and I'm asking for your number-one vote. I'm also on the board of a national economic development nonprofit called Interrise. We work in over 75 communities across the country, and we work with small business owners and help them grow so that they can hire more folks in their local economy. Throughout this work, one of the most important things that we talk about is not just low income, but we talk about the wealth gap. And it's really the wealth gap that is preventing more and more folks from moving into the middle class. And one of the largest things that we know for keeping folks in lower, in poverty is transportation. So one of the things that we should be talking about is forming collaborations with Lyft, Uber, Zipcar. Can we have credits for folks who are waiting a long time at buses, for instance, so that they can hop in a shared car service to use that when needed? I also think we're having a lot of development happening in the city, and a lot of that is around green development. We need to make sure that our minority business owners have access to these contracts, because that can do a lot to increase the incomes that are coming into their communities.
So I mentioned at the beginning about green collar jobs, and trying to find ways for our kids in Cambridge to get involved in building trades, and find opportunities in sustainable careers. But I also, I come from affordable housing background, and on the state level in particular, you find a lot of times, environmental groups and housing advocates at war with each other over density and protecting the environment. It's been great hearing Cambridge talk about density and incorporating environmental sustainability through building materials, bringing green canopy onto roof gardens, or open space incorporated with the housing. But the end of the day, for Cambridge, density is diversity, and we have to support density, because density is also sustainability. It reduces sprawl. And relatedly on that, on that topic, is looking at whether or not we can get rid of, or at least lower, the requirement for parking in some of the developments that are close to transit areas. Thanks. But we should also do that in the lens of, we're talking about equity. I mean, a lot of folks in this city can't afford to, you know, can't rely on a bike to get to work. They have to have a car to get out to the Burlington Mall to work at a Cinnabon, or whatever the job they may have, or get their kids to school. I mean, biking and having the opportunity to go to Kendall Square is not for everyone in Cambridge.
The intersection between justice on an economic, on a housing level, on a racial level, and sustainability is something I care deeply about. I come from a family of activists around sustainability and racial justice specifically. I'm the eldest of three daughters in a single-parent household, and we have experienced housing instability. When, in my early years of high school, we did lose our home, and we were legally homeless and couch surfing with our closest friends. And that was a really, really defining experience for my family. And the way I got to school was through public transportation, through biking when I missed my bus. And these experiences of mine have crafted my passion for preserving economic diversity in the city, but also making sure that it is this movement of wanting people who are of lower socioeconomic classes, and wanting to push forward this idea of engagement and being a part of these conversations and planning processes for sustainability. For me, I think that it stems down to wanting to make planning around climate change, preparedness, and sustainability in public transportation, as transparent as possible, and in involving of as many community meetings as we can, which I think the city is doing a really wonderful job on when it comes to real estate development. And I think that there is a lot more movement we can be doing on involving the voices of Cambridge.
So the first part of your question was about people of color, low-income communities, and immigrant communities. I don't think any of us, me included, can presume to speak on behalf of any of those communities. I think what we need to do, and what I've advocated for, is when I'm elected to the city council, I'm going to push my colleagues to try to have city council meetings in neighborhoods. We should get out of City Hall. We have five youth centers that are owned by the city. They all have gyms. The city TV crew has a mobile unit. We all have some means of getting around. Let's go to different neighborhoods and really understand what people care about, because not everybody has time to show up to Monday evening meetings. I'm even interested in looking at other opportunities, you know, can we have Saturday morning meetings? I don't know. Let's see. The other thing is, transit-oriented housing, greater density provides for more creative placemaking, and so that's something that's very important, especially when you consider the urban forest. I've advocated to create a small business resource center. Our small businesses need reliability, predictability. They need open access to city services. We can invest, for instance, in minority-owned businesses that focus on some of these environmental issues. Let's create a city fund for them, some sort of venture capital fund. And then the last thing is bike-share subsidies. Not everyone can afford Hubway or whatever else. So can we be a little creative and provide some subsidies for low-income communities to take advantage of those programs?
Hi, everyone. I'm Jan. And in terms of getting outside of City Hall, like Sam suggested, I hold weekly office hours in coffee shops. You can find me tomorrow morning from 8:00 to 9:30 at Burisma, which is near the City Hall annex. What I want to say about sustainability and affordability is what I don't see us doing, which is thinking outside of the box with the plan for the Ale Wife Quad, which is where we could be building and planning a model of sustainability and affordability, and instead, we're doing the same old thing. We could take a brownfields that is an urban heat island, and that has terrible air quality because of all the traffic pouring along the parkway, and we could transform it into a walkable urban neighborhood, mixed-use with green infrastructure, like you see in Copenhagen in Europe, with net-zero buildings, and with a higher percentage of affordable housing. There is a social justice issue right there already. In the '70s, we built Ringe Towers next to the city dump. In the late '80s, we opened Danahue Park, and we have still not found a way to connect the people on Ringe Avenue to Danahue Park over the railroad tracks. And we're about to make the same mistake again in the Ale Wife Quad. Let's not do it. Thanks.
Quinton Zander Van. I'm an immigrant from the rainforest, where we've learned how to survive by sharing with each other. In Cambridge, I helped found a benefit corporation that is delivering 100% solar electricity right now from a rooftop in Davis Square to community members at a discount. That's how we can share. We can make this happen. In Vale Court, just down the street here, we have an opportunity to build 100% affordable housing, net zero, in a dense transit hub with green space. We can do this right here in Cambridge, and I have the experience and the expertise to ensure that we maximize these opportunities. In Washington Elms, I just want to correct that it's, in fact, one of the places where we're replacing paved surfaces with a new type of surface material that allows the water to soak through. So again, we have opportunities here in Cambridge to do this in a just and equitable way. One of the ideas that I put forward in the Net-Zero Task Force was a carbon fund, where new buildings would pay into this fund, and we would use the money to start augmenting existing buildings so that they're more energy-efficient, which also helps to improve the quality of life for everyone living in those buildings. So we are ripe with opportunities for doing this in a just and equitable way. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dennis Carlon. I mentioned to you earlier, I'm an urban designer. I did the East Cambridge Riverfront Plan, the project with the Leechmere Canal and the Galleria. I know what it takes to build a neighborhood, and I'm not saying that's perfect, but it is a place for people, and that is key. I think the key issue is ownership or secure rent, from an affordability, sustainable point of view. I worked on housing in New York City, where there was low income, moderate income, and market income, because there were state funds, there were city funds. We are the wealthiest city in Massachusetts. We can do more of that if you all demand it. So building housing isn't just enough. It's building a community. And a community consists of public facilities. We built a few new schools in neighborhoods that are on the edge, and those neighborhoods will rise up. But if there isn't ownership, there is a problem there. I'm a big believer in pre-primary education, after-school education. I was part of a program called Say Yes to Education, which followed kids on to college from the Old Harrington School. That's what makes a difference in a neighborhood.
So I think the original question was about low-income communities and being vulnerable in terms of the environment and climate change. So, you know, as a social worker for the past 25 years, working with some of the most vulnerable children and families in Cambridge and across the state, I certainly, issues around social and economic justice are not just political or campaign issues for me. It's what I've dedicated my life to. And folks in our low-income communities are vulnerable in a lot of ways. And we've heard some of it, you know, tonight, about whether it's jobs, or housing, or hunger. But certainly in terms of their ability to be resilient in times of a disaster, right? And so, you know, some of the things that we're doing in the city, transportation was talked about a lot tonight. Cambridge pays $9 million a year to the MBTA to help support services. We paid $13 million to, for the extension of the Green Line. When that was going under, and we got the developers at North Point to put in another $13 million to keep that project alive. So we have to continue to leverage our financial stability, and also force, my motto is, "I want developers to scream, but not run away." We need to force them to do more for the community, and put more money into making sure that they're building net-zero buildings and sustainable buildings. Sorry.
And I think we have Craig Kelly just joined us.
Did you catch the question?
Yeah, didn't catch the question.
While Eric's filling him in, maybe we can just all take a deep breath.
Our old climbing are just kind of just
So everyone, thank you very much for coming out tonight. My name's Craig Kelly, and the issues of environmental and social equity are really what I live for. Some of you know this already, but the summer before last, I started a bike ride down the East Coast. I biked from the Canadian border to Cambridge. And then this past summer, I biked from Cambridge down to Washington DC. I biked I biked through all sorts of places that are not at all like Cambridge, urban poverty, rural poverty, ex-urban poverty. And I would stop along the way, and I'd ask strangers that I met, people in post offices, people gardening, other cyclists, people pushing baby carriages, whatever. I would ask them, what makes you feel safe and what makes you feel nervous? And they would ask me what I meant, and I said, I'm not going to tell you. I want to hear from you. And this is, you know, scores and scores of people over the thousand miles or so. And the overwhelming response on what makes people feel safe is being connected. It's being connected to their neighborhood, it's being connected to their family, it's being connected to their street. So when we talk about equity, when we talk about resilience, when we talk about building a future together, we need to talk about personal connections. And that can be very, very difficult. I'm a middle-aged white guy. It's tough for me to go out of my comfort zone and to sustain it. So from a city standpoint, I think the city, using best social practices and so forth, and all of us being willing to take risks with each other and to forgive each other when those risks aren't quite what we were expecting, doing that, we can build a community. We can build a resilient community, we can build a diverse community, we can build a multicultural community. And given the threats that we face, from climate change to thermonuclear weapons to God knows what's going to happen to the NFL, given, given, given those threats, we can only face this future together, and we can only face it if we are honest with each other and if we're connected to each other. So you don't want nine of me on city council, you want one of me on city council, and you want the eight other people to represent the rest of Cambridge, and all of us to be willing to disagree and be respectful with each other and come to community consensus. Thank you very much. Okay. In case some of you didn't see, I took a knee for the NFL back then. No, not for the NFL, for Kaepernick. Don't get me started about a certain Number 45's comments about that stuff. All right. What we're going to do is our final set, final round. We're going to take like three or four subject topics, and maybe five or six of you comment. So if this issue is a burning issue with you, get your hand up really fast. And we're going to start with bicycling. In many cities, particularly in Northern Europe, but increasingly in places like New York City, Chicago, I've seen little kids riding on some of the biggest avenues because those lanes are protected for two, three, four, five miles. The general ideal vision of cycling for everybody is called eight-to-80. An eight-year-old is comfortable riding a bicycle, an 80-year-old is comfortable riding a bicycle. I don't think anybody, for all the improvements that are happening here, there, Western Avenue, Concord Avenue, some, a little bit in Harvard Square, I don't think anybody is yet saying we're an eight-to-80 city for bicycling. So who among you has the most aggressive plan to get us to eight-to-80? And, no. You'll have to guess. The, so, who's going to get us to eight-to-80 and how?
So I've been a bicycle commuter all my life. I'm temporarily disabled because of a hip issue, but hope to get back on my bike soon. Both of my children are at CLS, and they bike regularly to the school. This is a very important issue to me. The solution is very simple. We have protected bike lanes being implemented in the city right now. We have a vision that has been put forward by the Community Development Department. What we need now is a plan for implementing a connected network of protected bike lanes throughout the city. It's just that simple, and we need people like me on the council to make sure it's actually going to happen. Thank you.
Okay. I think, hi, I'm still Jan. I think my position is well-known on this, and I think I, we cannot just rely on putting the protected bike lanes there and hoping people will get on board. I realize that it's a huge transition for many people and that not everyone is going to bike, but I do believe that there is a solid, large segment of the population that will bike more of the time, maybe all the time, maybe only some of the time, if we make a safe, protected network that ties into a regional network. So I'm going to, I'm going to stay committed to that, but I'm going to realize that it's a generational transition and that we have to help people get there, and that we need leaders who are good communicators who can bring people along that trajectory with us. Thank you.
I do think it's still important that we try to increase our electric car infrastructure here, but I bike all the time. I, it's definitely the fastest, most efficient way to get around Cambridge. It beats every, any other transportation mode to get from one end of Cambridge to the other. And I probably run into what I call an NDE, a near-door experience, probably once a month, and it's terrifying. And I am absolutely committed to making safe bike lanes all across Cambridge, 100%.
My latest near-collision experience happened about four hours ago on Western Avenue on the protected bike lane. The car made a right-hand turn. I hit the brakes, he hit the brakes. Either one of us had been a split second later, I wouldn't be standing here right now. So we need to understand that biking is never going to be perfectly safe. We also need to understand that urban mobility, the future of how we transport ourselves in the city, is going to include bikes. Yes, it is going to include a lot of electric personal vehicles, and we need to design for those as well. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. So respectfully, I'm for the bike lanes, of course. I've been biking all my life, since my dad set me up at the top of the hill and let me go. So, so, but, but it's not going to work in Cambridge without reducing the traffic. It can't work. I bumped into a lift, a DPW backhoe driver. I engaged him. I said, what do you think needs to be done here in Cambridge? Not knowing, had no idea what he said. He says, get rid of the bike lanes. Okay? Because, okay, so, of course, we can have, but if we bring less traffic, by one idea is, is an Uber app that's owned, that's run and owned by the city of Cambridge or by a nonprofit, so that there's less traffic. We need the less traffic to make the more bikes.
I am a proponent of the protected bike lanes, but to add on to that and add something new to the conversation, I'm really curious to explore the option of implementing pedestrian streets here in Cambridge that are built for not having cars on the road, but have streets that are dedicated to bikers and pedestrians. I am a proponent of having safer streets and streets that work for all citizens from eight to 80, and so through canvassing, I've picked up a lot of ideas, including new places that I think we can have more frequency of benches to try to make walking accessibility for seniors more, more possible as well. In addition to just making places, I think that also making sure that helmets and lights are more, more accessible for all communities as well, because they are very expensive.
So, you know, I, as I said in my opening comments, I sort of came to the bike conversation a little differently than some of the folks up here, because I don't ride a bike, I have really bad knees, I don't ride a bike, it's something I never did in the city, it just wasn't part of my life. But I came to it from a person away from my kid getting, getting hit. And so I am, you know, when we talk about, people are saying, well, you know, we need the courage to do this. I am, for me to take this position to support the Bike Alliance's pledge is something that is not what a lot of my supporters want me to do. A lot of my supporters who are older Cambridge residents who are concerned about parking don't want me to do this. But I'm doing it because it's the right thing to do. I'm doing it because people need to be safe, and I don't want people dying on our streets. So that's the kind of courage that I bring. It's not about politics, it's about safety and doing what's right.
Okay. The second question. Much has been said this evening by many of you, that the, Cambridge is already quite developed. We're not going to have a building boom of the, of the type of the Seaport District. We've already had that in Kendall. And the majority of the emissions comes from commercial buildings. So how much should emissions reduction be voluntary? How much of it should be mandatory from the city council? How do we get to zero emissions when more than half of the emissions are produced by commercial developers? Who are, who may or may not share your views? We'll start with different people. People who didn't answer the first one.
Hi, so my name's Adrian Musgrave. This is one of the hardest questions to actually answer, because there's a part of it where we need the technology to catch up with our needs. The HVAC systems are some of the primary drivers of emissions in the city, yet the efficiency of these products are not where we necessarily need them to be. I think we have a great opportunity right now with the Volpi development. MIT has also made sort of a net zero priority, and so really asking them and to push them to make the Volpi development 100% green development is, I think, something that we can work a lot harder on. The other thing that I think is really important to consider is, when we have these developments that come up, there's a lot of conversation, a lot of sort of push and pull for what we want, and by allowing the 20% affordable and the linkage fee to be kept the same, it also gives us more room to push for green technology.
A slight amendment to that question could be, you know, given that developers usually have their own resources, would you direct the Community Development Department to use city resources, design responses which support sustainability and affordability rather than specific areas of expertise that serve the developers? Given that developers usually have their own resources, like, I'll shorten it, would you direct the Community Development Department to support sustainability in benefit to city residents and to your city goals as opposed to, or compared to, what developers want?
Quentin Zandervan, so, as I mentioned, four years ago, I filed the net-zero zoning petition with Mike Conley and John Pitkin. I served on the Net Zero Task Force that developed the Net Zero Action Plan, which already lays out a 25-year plan for how we are going to get all buildings in Cambridge to zero emissions. We have the technology, we have the wherewithal to do this, and it is not a cost trade-off. There are ways to do this that save the building owner's money, that save the occupants' money. So all we have to do is execute the plan, and with me on the city council, I'll make sure that we actually do that.
Quentin is, is correct, and, you know, thank you for your leadership on the Net Zero Plan. But, you know, I also don't want people to think that we require a lot of developers in this city, more than most other communities do, in terms of stormwater retention, lead gold, you know, standards in their buildings, pushing them to net zero. These are, you know, these are things that the city already does and already requires. Now, maybe it's not enough, you know? Sometimes it's, we may be better than other places, but that doesn't mean we're doing it all perfectly, right? So we continue to need to push the envelope, but I don't want people to think that we don't have any requirements or standards for developers. We actually have some of the strictest in the state.
The reality is, most buildings are poorly designed. The newer buildings are better. These all-glass buildings will be retrofitted within 25 to 30 years. They will not work. The number of 90-degree days are going to triple. It's going to impact the air conditioning. When that happens, the city, with their permitting process, can come in and set higher standards. It's, they're going to be forced to. I also agree with Quentin that economically, entities are going to do it themselves.
I just want to point out that, like Quentin said, we have the Net Zero Action Plan, and requirements for building emissions and for stormwater technology are in the long-term best interest of the property owner. And the problem I see is that we have short-term profits for these global real estate investment trusts that are investing in our community and flipping their assets, and they don't care about the long term. But in the long term, it's going to save them money, and it's going to protect their asset from flooding. So why wouldn't you do it?
Just one idea I wanted to add is this idea of maybe requiring an energy audit for all buildings, and you get a score, you put a sticker on the building, and then when there's a sale, everyone knows, you know, how efficient is this building, what improvements need to be made, and then the owner of the building throughout will have an incentive to then make those improvements to the building to make it more energy-efficient, make it more sustainable, because at the point of sale, all that information will then be public to the, to the potential buyers.
I think that the points made by my colleagues are quite important, but what's missing really is that we should really require environmental impact studies, because it's just not developing buildings, it's developing the area and the land. And how does that affect our water? How does it affect, like, the trees and the soil around it? If we're really looking at an equity lens, we want to make sure that every single place has an environmental impact study. I think that having the study will actually allow progress to go forward instead of preventing it, because it allows the community engagement and accountability and builds trust with, within the relationship.
Sustainability and resiliency around power absolutely needs to have distributed power, and to do that, we need onsite generation and onsite or offsite storage, which means we need to change the incredibly archaic, outdated, and not-working Department of Utility rules in how we move energy around and our zoning in terms of what we can use our setbacks for. Batteries are becoming incredibly powerful, useful, and cheap. We just don't have the laws to use them properly, but we can if we work with the DPU as well as change our zoning. Thank you.
Jeff Santos, santosforcitycouncil.com. I think, as I mentioned earlier, you know, we need to be able to lead. Mark McGovern talked earlier about the fact that we do better than other communities. Cambridge, with millions in dollars in surplus, Cambridge with the access to the State House, Cambridge, one of the, recognized as one of the most progressive cities in the nation, has to lead and has to be able to work and communicate with the rest of the cities and towns in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. If given the opportunity, I can help make that happen.
Last question of this evening. Given what we just saw in Houston, a climate disaster that was clearly man-made, human-made, from paving over entire massive prairies and wetlands. Yeah, man, oh, Kathy. She said it was man-made. Don't blame any women for that, right? Would you, would you place limits on building, on the flood, the floodplain and wetlands, especially at Ale-Wife and other wetland-vulnerable areas of Cambridge?
So I think for that area...
So I think for that area, we've talked about this, but we have to think about how we can accommodate, you know, flooding. There are ways to do that. And in any new development... Let's talk about Wheeler Street, the development that's proposed. You know, the Fresh Pond Alliance did put out a letter that detailed, "Look, you know, we have to talk about flooding, whether it's utilizing, you know, rain screens, it's utilizing, you know, storing wastewater, protecting utilities, elevating backup generators, electric rooms above ground level." There are ways that we can accommodate. So we have to, for any new development that's coming up in Aleweith, you know, we have the data, and with environmental impact studies, we have a plan to follow.
I'll be quick. Adrian Musgrave, I actually, so I actually agree with a lot of what's been said about the Aleweith area particularly. The whole area, I live in North Cambridge and I cycle a lot, the whole area is not best for living, and that includes the flooding. Even now, when there's a little bit of rain, people who live in the apartment buildings, it's hard to get to the T because it floods so much even right now. So I think a comprehensive plan that really addresses the full mobility, addresses the shopping centers are there, so people are not commuting through shopping centers, and addresses the floodplain itself to add some of those pieces that would mitigate the risk, is something that has to be done in a really comprehensive way.
I would just add, let's also distinguish Houston a little bit, too. It's like the fourth or fifth largest metropolitan area in America, and there's no zoning code there either. So there's a lot of ways to distinguish it from the city of Cambridge. I think Aleweith is a great opportunity for affordability and density in a place that we haven't seen it historically. I'll end where I began. 40R, the Smart Growth Planning Tool, allows you to access and leverage state funding that can provide for sewers and mitigate a lot of these environmental concerns. It's a planning statute. We have to plan. It requires us to get together with the State Department of Housing and Community Development, come up with a plan, and that's what we need to do in the city of Cambridge to develop the Aleweith area.
Yes. To agree with what Sean said, we can look at the Aleweith area for that. I would propose redrawing the Aleweith overlay district to correspond to the 500-year floodplain rather than 100-year floodplain. That would encompass nearly the whole quad. And also, I would look at a Municipal Wetlands Protection Act, which we do not have, that would empower our Conservation Commission more than it is presently.
So Aleweith is a no-man's land. Let's face it. It's isolated, it's the worst place to put a neighborhood. But we're going to put a neighborhood there. The pressures are already started, so it has to be the city that steps in and says, "Here is the street pattern, here is where the open spaces are, here is the shuttle bridge," not a pedestrian bridge, "a shuttle bridge that connects that area to the T." The city has to step up. If, there's something called tax increment financing, which is allowed in the state, that means all new taxes that are generated in Aleweith will go to Aleweith to build everything we're talking about. Earlier, I said public facilities. If you don't have a school or a library there, there's no neighborhood. So all these things are doable, including natural ecological systems. We just want to, have to want to do it. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you, candidates. There's a lot. We started off with about 15, we ended about 18, 19. There was one question that came to me. I'll answer this myself. I'm not a candidate. But I think it's important. Someone asked me, handed me a card, says, "How do we get bikers to stop at red lights?"
[laughter]
I have to say, yeah, I have to say, as someone who is a really advocate for bike lanes, not just in Cambridge, but I wrote many columns on this in the Boston Globe, I also wrote a column saying to bikers, "You're your own worst enemy when you don't stop at a red light." So I like that question. So, and -- So, we're going to wrap up with, Stephen's going to close us out.
Thank you. Thank you, Derek. Thank you, candidates. Right in here. We made it through two and a half hours of discussion about climate resilience, so give yourself a round of applause.
[applause]
And I think it's noted that this is just the beginning of the conversation. I encourage you to go to greencambridge.org/donate and continue this, help us continue this conversation. But also, get involved in your community, get involved in more events like this. But it's more about than going, just going to meetings. It's about talking to your neighbors, it's about sharing the things that are around you, it's about sharing your stories with the people around you. So I just want to thank everyone for coming. Derek's going to, do you still have your books in the back? Derek has the books in the back. And if you have any of those green cups and things, just leave them on the table. I'm going to take them home and wash them.
[laughter]
And I just want to thank everyone for being here.